Welcome to the February 12, 2024, Tuolton City Council Work Session. We're starting off tonight with a Basalt Creek Park update led by Ross Hoover. Ross is delegating, eh?
We're going to be a team presentation tonight.
With Rich, welcome, Rich.
Yep, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Rich Mueller, Parks Planning Development Manager, and Ross Hoover, Parks and Recreation Director. And I'm going to give you some overview of Basalt Creek Parks, and then Ross is going to dive into the specifics. So, the 2018 Master Plan informed the need as Basalt Creek residential unemployment grew to do a specific Basalt Creek Parks and Recreation Plan. Both these processes extensive public engagement, and the Basalt Creek Plan advised acquiring property to develop future parks and trails once again as residential unemployment grew in this expansion area. I think many of you remember kind of the overall trail plan. It did not specifically advise parkland, but 14 acres of parkland, two different parcels, were obtained in this area here, and another over three acres here for a trailhead in employment area and right across from the residential properties or developments. And so with that, oops, let me try to, there we go. With that, we had an opportunity, as the city obtained some property right here. You're aware, this is Boones Ferry, Norwood, Autumn Sunrise, and there's a little, in yellow here, a little piece of property. It's just under a half acre. It's about 250 feet long by 50 feet wide and connects in to Boones Ferry Road. And this here is Plumb Gardens Development, and this is the parcel right here. This is a road that goes between Plumb Gardens and Autumn Sunrise, and so this is the piece we're talking about right here. And with that, I'm going to turn things over, and Ross is going to run you through the specifics.
Thank you, Rich. So, this section of land, if we, we'll just go back one slide to take a peek at this. So, looking at this Plumbback Gardens slide, you can see the highlighted section is what we'll talk about in detail in the next, but just to kind of orient everyone, north is on the right side of this slide. So, we're looking, if you look straight up towards the top of the slide, that's Boones Ferry. And so, this piece of property is actually right on the road. So, this felt, I think, to our department and to other departments in the city like a fantastic opportunity. You saw through the Parks Plan, the system-wide plan, but also through the Basalt Creek Plan, there is a story within those plans, and that is a story of connections connecting people to places off right of way. And so, this felt like a fantastic opportunity to make some of those connections happen. And so, what does that connection look like? And how do we move people from the Plumbback Gardens area and the Autumn Sunrise area and the high school grounds? How do we get people from those areas out to the street, out to the sidewalk, out to future transit connections? How do we move people also to the future park that's across the street from Boones, from these housing developments? And so, this felt like that type of corridor, a chance to capitalize on this space and turn it into a connection and not just a space. And so, what we are, the path that we are on and sort of the process, we'll talk a little bit about that, really, this is really about building that connection, building a trail and through this corridor, but also a small seating area, plaza, if you will, and that you can see on the left side on the street, there's a future bus stop and bench also in connection with this trail, so that folks can come out of their house, their apartment, their condo, whatever it may be, their school, and connect out to that transit. So, that's sort of the first initial phase of this work and creating that connection first, but then you'll see on the left side what we call common elements on that lower left, right, or left portion of the slide, really just constructing some seating, an eight-foot-wide concrete path, getting some vegetation in this corridor. In all likelihood, the vegetation would be a mixture of seed that's like a native grass seed and a native wildflowers mix, in all likelihood. This would probably be a low-mow corridor, something easy maintenance to start with. And then, really, on the lower portion of the slide, you see potential future amenities. And so, there's a whole fantastic opportunity here to imagine not only just this corridor, but what happens in the rest of the park space in the Basalt Creek area. The approximately 15 acres across Boones Ferry, this becomes a key connector to get people to that future park as well. So, once we, once folks move into this area that's being developed currently, we have a fantastic opportunity to really talk about what that looks like and specific amenities that we would like to see in this corridor, but also across the street in the park. And so, we've listed a few of those. Some of these potential future amenities, as we're calling them in this slide, came out of the, from our community members who live in Basalt Creek currently and from business owners in Tuolton. We developed a really pretty broad list of potential amenities, and this came from that, and then applying specifically to this size of a site, what might make sense. But this, these are just ideas at this point. But we wanted to present these to you so that you have a sense for what we're up to in Basalt Creek currently and what we see as future work yet to come. And we will just flip through a few of these sort of conceptual images, so you can see sort of what the future park amenities, not only in this site, but throughout Basalt Creek Parks, potentially could look like. Really, on the upper-left photo there, you see a path, a trail, with somebody running. Don't know if this is going to be long enough for a really, a really good run, but it's a corridor at this stage. But you can see the wildflowers, kind of rough-mow space. Do we have a picnic shelter at this space in the future? Do we have a mural on a retaining wall that's in this location? Do we have community gardens? Some really, some really great questions to talk about with our community in the future, and then some other images of ideas that came out of the prior engagement work we did with our community. And so, and then you see some, a variety of tree species. We really see this as an opportunity, too, to do some of the initial specific actions that are listed in the draft Climate Action Plan. This is a chance to express sort of the desires in the Climate Action Plan, when, if and when, you consider that for adoption. This site is potentially one of those sites where we could take some specific actions, plant some climate-resilient trees and shrubbery and grass seed that is also adaptable. So, we just wanted to share that with you, wanted to share with you what we are planning to do now, which is essentially that trail and turn this corridor into something that's functional, and then in the future to do some of the really deep engagement work with our future community members and existing community members and really imagine what it becomes in the future. And wanted to open it up to any questions or comments or feedback that you might have at this stage.
Questions for Ross or Rich? Council Pratt.
Oh, I just wanted, I think you've been really thoughtful with this, and I wanted to say, this little stretch, I think it's great. And I know when we, on Boones Ferry, that when we were redoing the paths there, I know there was a strong support for keeping that little piece off the road, just, and I know I use that, and it makes a big difference, and it's a lot nicer. And then, also, I just wanted to thank you for the thought of the mural, because I just happened to drive up Tuolton Road, and I saw the mural at the park, you know, in the shelter, and it was lit up, and it looked pretty cool. So, I just think it's great what you're doing. Thanks.
Other questions? Council Sacco and Council Hillier.
I don't really have any questions, just, I think that it looks great, and I love the idea of having like a grass-wildflower mixture, obviously bringing pollinators into that. It kind of reminds me of the, there's a part of the trail in Cook Park that has wildflowers, and I love the way it looks. It's done really tastefully and looks really pretty, so I love that idea. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you. I'd echo all those comments and just say, just out of curiosity, has the community identified like an off-leash dog park for that area? Sorry, I'm all about that, and a place where you can kind of also walk, that sort of thing? Just curious.
Yeah, great question. Thank you for your feedback so far. And so, Rich led the engagement process in the Basalt Creek area to envision future potential park amenities, and that was one of the, that was one of the ideas that came up. And so, absolutely, I think, I think Tuolton residents and business owners love the ability to have a space to take their pets and dogs and have them off-leash, and so, I would anticipate we'll hear that as we first build this trail and then, second, dive into a pretty deep engagement. I would anticipate we'll hear that as well.
I can see why it's not in this area. Thank you.
Other questions? Excuse me. I just have one really wonky one. Why only eight feet on the width? Because I hear about this a lot from Aging Task Force about widths of paths.
Right. Thank you for that question. Right now, our regional trails are 12-foot, and Tuolton River-Greenway Trail, actually Boones in front of Plumb Gardens and Autumn Sunrise is 12 feet. And if you look at Brown's Ferry, if you look at the trail that's being built under 99 right now, connections into that are eight feet, and that just happens to be our standard, and basically serving the residents from those two complexes into a larger trail, you know, pedestrian and bike corridor, has been eight feet throughout our system, so that's...
I ask because I drive by quite a few ACIPAS facilities, and you see quite a few people in wheelchairs, and just my concern is if they're on their wheelchair and you have bikes and peds, is the width, not that you have to change, just think about it, because there's quite a few people. I'm thinking of specifically near Family Promises location, where there are at least four or five people in wheelchairs out there every day around the ACIPAS facility, you know, basically moving around, so I'd hate to have, you know, if they want to use that path, and then it not be wide enough.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much. We'll bring it to, this is a conceptual, after this information and your input, we'll go into construction design, and so, we'll bring that to the attention of the design team for this project. Right now, we're using MIG, who many of you worked with, did the Master Plan, and actually Basalt Creek Plan, so we'll definitely bring that to their attention. Thank you.
Can I just ask two things? One, this will be on consent the next council meeting, correct? Or it's coming back for the design contract, right?
Correct, yes. So, we will bring back a design contract as well, and then also a construction contract to build it, and yes, it would be on consent, Sherilyn.
And this is being paid for out of ARPA dollars, I believe?
Thank you. Great point, yes. This is being paid for and funded by ARPA, ARPA funds.
Council goes up.
I'm sure there is a plan for conservation, and when it comes to the resources like water usage and the technologies for that, so I'm sure that those have been considered, the smart controllers, two-wire systems, decoders, and things like that. Is that part of the plan?
Yes, we haven't, we haven't spec'd any of the exact equipment out, but absolutely, our intent in the planning documents that council's adopted, our system plan, calls for changing out old systems to new, and where we have an opportunity to install new systems that are new, that we would install those that are smart irrigation controllers and everything that you mentioned. So, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks for Ross and Rich.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to item number two, Government Affairs and Lobbying Services Discussion Led by Megan. Welcome, Megan.
Hello, Mayor and Members of the City Council. Megan George, your Deputy City Manager. All right, I am here tonight to present information on government affairs and lobbying services. Throughout my presentation, I'll use the term "government affairs," lobbying, and advocacy interchangeably. I am looking for direction from the City Council on the scope of services that is desired. Included in your packet is a draft request for proposals. Following tonight's discussion, if the council desires to move forward, we will update that based on the council's discussion. All right, starting with a little bit of background information. Tuolton pays dues annually to three organizations that provide some level of advocacy, the League of Oregon Cities, the Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium, and the National League of Cities. All three advocate, whether at the state level or the federal level, on behalf of cities, but none provide advocacy services for Tuolton specifically. The City Council and members of staff submit funding requests, track legislative issues, and advocate when capacity exists. And when I say "capacity," what I mean is subject matter expertise as well as time. For example, and this one should be very familiar, several members of the City Council have provided comments, feedback, and information to various parties and decision-makers related to tolling. Another example from last year's session, Mayor Bubinick worked with a community member and several legislators to submit a funding request for a noise study related to the gun rage just outside of town. Unfortunately, that was not funded. Another example, a little bit further back and related to Ross Hoover, who was just here, no longer here, he testified in front of one of the committees of the Oregon Legislature during the pandemic to ask for increased funding levels for parks, because the parks, as we all know, were used much more than they had been during the pandemic. Ross did this as Tuolton's Parks and Recreation Director, as well as a leader within the Oregon Recreation and Parks Association. We budgeted $100,000 in this year's fiscal budget for government affairs and lobbying services. So, I have a few wheels, because we don't need to recreate the wheel. So, I reviewed materials and talked with staff from Wilsonville, Happy Valley, and Tigard, and those three cities were the ones that were responsive when I reached out for additional information. And there are various models employed throughout the Portland metropolitan area. There are some cities that have a dedicated city staff position or positions, and Portland is the obvious example here, they have a whole team of lobbyists. It can be a responsibility shared by multiple city staff, that's how we've done it in Tuolton, Lake Oswego is another city that handles it that way, or it can be a hired lobbyist or lobbying firm, and that's the example that Wilsonville, Happy Valley, and Tigard all employ. And it's important to note that when hiring a lobbyist or a lobbying firm, you still need to provide capacity at the staff level to support that contract. For example, in Wilsonville, their Public and Government Affairs Director, among other responsibilities, works directly with their lobbyist Greg Leo, and I know the mayor and Sherilyn have been working on a project with that individual recently. In Happy Valley, their Policy Analyst and Assistant City Manager work directly with their lobbyist Inga Deckert. There are a variety of firms in the Portland metropolitan area that provide this type of service, and we know of a few, including CFM, Thorn Run Partners, Northwest Policy Advocates, Proxy Government Relations, and the Leo Company. And if you all know of others, please do let me know, so that we can add it to our list for distribution when we post the RFP. So, there are many possible services, and after discussing with our peers and reviewing existing RFPs and contracts, I sorted those possible services into six categories. For each of the categories, the service could be provided at the state level and/or the federal level. After I go through each service individually, I'll pull up a summary slide for the council's discussion. In addition, the Request for Proposal, which is included in your packet, includes a robust scope of work, and based on the discussion this evening, will likely need to be edited and pared down. Okay, the first service is Develop Legislative Priorities. Priorities can help focus the organization's advocacy work and facilitate consistent messaging from all parties involved with advocating on Tuolton's behalf. Determining priorities specifically for funding can lay the groundwork for funding opportunities when they pop up, be they federal earmarks, grants, or something else. As the City Council is aware, the League of Oregon Cities goes through a priority-setting process every two years, and Tuolton has a vote in determining those priorities. But again, those priorities are general in nature and not specific to Tuolton. Currently, Tuolton does not have a process to set a legislative agenda. However, the City Council does provide direction to staff throughout the year on legislation and other advocacy priorities. For example, the City Council decided to join a lawsuit by the city of Springfield a few years ago to challenge Governor Brown's Climate-Friendly and Equitable Communities Executive Order. Another area that the council has engaged and directed staff to engage is for increased public transportation to Tuolton, including things like the Southwest Corridor and increased lines and service from TRIMET and Ride Connection. Priorities can be adopted annually or every two years, or even further out than that, and they can be general, like Priority One Funding, or very specific, for example, Funding for Project X, Project Y, Project Z. Number two, Build Relationships. So, the League of Oregon Cities just announced the release of their Lobbying 101 Toolkit. Some of you may have received an email to that nature. The Toolkit includes a section on developing legislative relationships. From their webpage, they say, "If you have a policy issue that needs to be addressed or city projects that need additional financial support, building and fostering relationships with lawmakers may determine the fate of a request." A lobbyist could help the council and city staff build relationship with our legislative and congressional delegations, other lawmakers who may share priorities with Tuolton, their respective staff teams, and staff from the state and/or federal agencies charged with rulemaking and implementation. Members of the City Council have existing relationships with lawmakers, and in some cases, members of their staff. These relationships have been important to glean information about emerging issues and opportunities. I know that Sherilyn emailed you all earlier today about our application for federal earmarks. In that case, Representative Salinas reached out to the mayor and others with information on her policy priorities for that funding cycle. We then were able to reach out to staff from her office, as well as staff from this Senate side of the House, to ask for their input on our application and find out a little bit more about the process. A lobbyist could help us navigate lawmakers' offices and agency staff, Senate meetings, provide meaningful follow-up, and clue us into relationship-building and relationship-maintaining strategies. Another service that we might consider that some cities do is tasking our lobbyists to organize and facilitate delegation visits with the City Council or with the larger Tuolton community. Currently, we schedule these on an ad hoc basis, typically at the request of the lawmaker. All right, number three, Facilitate Development of Project Funding Asks. With our current memberships, we already receive advocacy for policy issues that impact cities. Perhaps not for everything, and perhaps not in our preferred ways, but policy issues like recreational immunity are being supported by others. Although, and I can hear LSC's Long Term General Government Lobbyist Scott Winkle saying that their message is far more effective if it comes from a city directly than from him. What is not currently covered by those memberships is specific project funding asks for Tuolton. A dedicated lobbyist would assist us in identifying, pursuing, and securing federal, state, and local program discretionary funding. They would provide advice based on their knowledge of lawmakers' priorities and other inside baseball. They would also have familiarity with the various processes and timelines, and it would help us prepare and navigate them. So, we have applied for discretionary funding in the past, and at least in one case, we did receive funds. So, first, in 2021, we applied for a federal earmark for the Boones Ferry Corridor project. We did not receive funding through that process, and as you all know, we were able to fund the project through our Tuolton Moving Forward Fund and Transportation Development Tax. In the last 10 years, we worked with TRIMET to submit a federal earmark for a quiet zone request, and that request was funded at over $5 million. Participating in these processes is labor-intensive and often has short timelines. A dedicated lobbyist could provide extra capacity and subject matter expertise. Okay, number four, Bill and Issue Tracking. So, outside of funding requests, there are hundreds of issues that impact cities and Tuolton specifically. For example, and again, these will sound familiar, tolling, climate-friendly and equitable communities, recreational immunity, one that we talked about recently, Paid Leave Oregon, and many more. Relevant to the short session currently happening, we know that Governor Kotek's number-one priority is housing, and there has already been a hearing on this topic. Whatever comes from the bill and the session, we will definitely want to know. During session, these look like bills. Outside of session, they could be in pre-session emerging issues and chatter or legislative concepts, and then post-session, it could be rulemaking and implementation. A dedicated lobbyist could facilitate a process to identify and prioritize bills during the session, and depending on the city's interests, this could be a really long list, or it could be a very short list. So, number four and number five go together, so I'm going to move on to the next slide, but I'll be referring to both. So, five, Advocate for Legislative Priorities. Tracking bills during session enables the council and staff to participate, meaning provide written or oral testimony and have focused discussions with lawmakers and staff. Tracking bills and advocating for or against them is a service already provided by the League of Oregon Cities and Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium. As capacity allows, both the City Council and staff have consumed updates from both of those organizations and, although more rarely, participated by sharing testimony, joining coalitions, signing letters, and more. A dedicated lobbyist would add capacity to help Tuolton focus on the bills and issues that are most important to us and provide targeted Tuolton-specific advocacy on those bills and issues. Some of the ways they could do this is by keeping the council up to date on priority items, coordinating written and oral testimony for legislative hearings, and developing talking points for city council and staff. Okay, finally, the last service category I have included is Communicating Progress. This looks different in every community, so I provided a few examples, so you can get a sense for the scale. On the light end of the spectrum, that could mean one annual report. Medium, maybe an update before or after Oregon's sessions. On the heavy end, that could be an update before and after session and periodically throughout. Okay, I'm nearing the end. So, the descriptions I provided were not exhaustive, and I'm sure that there are overlaps between categories. My intent in organizing it that way was to provide you all with a starting point for your discussion on the scope of services you desire. On the slide, I have listed all six categories for each. I'm hoping they were helpful starting points, excuse me, I have listed all six categories for each. I'm looking for the council to determine which, if any, you would like to pursue at the state and federal level. It looks like my slide got messed up. Sorry for the yellow highlight. That was to come later. If all 12 of these services were desired, we anticipate the total cost of the contract would be between $150,000 and $175,000 annually. And as a reminder, we budgeted $100,000, so we need to prioritize what is most relevant and most impactful to Tuolton. The goal in considering these services is to build on the work we've already put in at both the council level and the staff level, to increase our capacity and consequently our impact. We're not starting from scratch. All six of these services may not be relevant to Tuolton right now. In discussions with staff, we have identified the highlighted services up there as where we think we might have the most impact. All right, so, I'll go back to that slide, but I wanted to share a little bit about the next step, so you can get an idea for the timeline that we've considered, but I'll end on the service summary, so that you all can begin your conversation. So, first, we can release the RFP on February 21st. We're proposing to have a pre-proposal meeting on the 28th. The RFP would close in about a month, so on March 20th. The following week, the review committee, which thus far includes Mayor Bubinick, Sherilyn Lombos, and myself, but could include others if there was desire from the council, first week of April, would be interviews with all proposals, and by mid-April, we could be prepared to issue the contract. All right, ending on this slide, Mayor, I'll turn it over to you. I'm happy to answer questions and take your direction.
Before we get into discussion, any questions for Megan? Council President Pratt.
This might be a dawn question. Well, since this will be awarded April 15th, and the short session's going to be way done, does that $100,000 have to be spent by the end of June, or can it roll over into the next?
It could roll over.
Okay.
Yeah.
Council Sacco.
Thank you for your presentation. I actually had a lot more questions coming into your presentation, so thank you so much for all the information. And I think you did a very good job, but as a, I guess as a layperson, when it comes to this topic, I am still concerned about just our return... to this topic, I am still concerned about just our return on investment and exactly what we're going to get for our money. Like, what are the outcome, the actual outcomes that we are going to see? And I know you can't answer that question, but I just wanted to let people know that that's a concern of mine, is just really understanding what, you know, what we can see out of this. And so I think that time will tell, and this isn't something that has to be permanent moving forward. I understand that, but I just wanted to voice that concern. Thanks, Counsel.
Other questions for Megan? All right, discussion. All right, who wants to lead off? You're staring at.
I'll say something. Well, I guess, on the, just looking at it, I think a lot of our emphasis should be on the state, because that seems to directly affect us. I mean, it's nice to go after those earmarks from the federal, so it'd be nice to have a little bandwidth for that, but it seems like the state stuff is what really affects us directly. And to me, I think the advantage of having a person like this would be that they would have insider information and can help us know the direction things are going, or what the thought process is, so we can advocate for the city, for the things we know we might actually get, I guess.
Other thoughts? Counsel Hillier.
Oh, thank you. So I guess what I am thinking is that these relationships are so critical to understand, to be involved, and because we do have term limits in our city, I think this is even more critical to ensure that we're keeping relationships at the state and the federal level, and it's why I think that this is such an important investment of $100,000 each year. I could, I'm curious why Advocate for Legislative Priorities was removed from your list. I'm sure it's a good reason, so I was just curious about that. I guess I should have asked that before. So those are my thoughts.
Do you want to answer that question?
Yeah, I can jump in. Yeah, no, not a problem. So the thinking there is that, to a certain extent, that is a thing that we are already doing as capacity allows, and so it could be something that we add into that contract to do more of, but I'm not necessarily anticipating that we need to do more of that level of advocacy.
Counsel Sacco.
Another question, sorry. But I guess to that point is, you know, entering into a contract, is it fluid to some degree if we decide that something, you know, big comes up and we want to shift focus for whatever reason? I assume that it's flexible.
The contracts, yeah, the contracts that I looked at had a list of services in bullet point format essentially that said any of all, any or all of these things may be used at various times. Typically, it's a flat fee that you pay for state level and then for federal level, and depending on the time of year, they may be doing a lot of work or they may be doing less work. But they would choose from all of the options, and we would give direction based on that.
Because my thinking is, on both sides, two, three, and six are obviously the, where you're going to get the bang for the buck, like Counsel Sacco's saying, especially at the federal level. An example I've used before is the lobbying firm for Sherwood has landed them over $3 million in road projects that they would not gotten if they didn't have the lobbyist, because that person is in the ear of the congresspeople who have, and senators, who direct spending. So to me, those, you know, those are critical. The legislative priorities, like you said, the League of Oregon Cities does it, MMC does it, we might, to me, eh, we might not need that. Bill and issue tracking, LOC does a phenomenal job at the state level. Federal, no one can keep track of billing. Bills and issue tracking at the federal government is whether they're going to have money or not, and are they going to, you know, meet next week. So to me, it's like those six things are the most critical of the 12 in my book. Obviously, we want to know what they're doing, so, you know, the communicating progress is big. And part of my look is that, you know, if the firm that we eventually select has enough juice in both Salem and DC, some are better than others, a different part, you know, we want to find a firm that can do both of these. That's another criteria for me, the services, that they can equally represent us in Salem and in DC. Because, especially on the federal side, because it's the bureaucracy at the federal government, you know, to get the money, this lobbying firms will know how to get it, who to talk to, what bureaucrat they need to get it through, so those, to me, are the six critical ones. And Salem, we can always go down to Salem a lot, testify, but we're not going to be flying, jetting back and forth to DC. I know mayors who do that with their lobbyists, because they have to, because that's the only way they're going to get money, is fly to DC, because it's millions of dollars. Most of the mayors have given up at the state, because there aren't, there are no dollars. So it's all about building the relationship to work with your just legislator to tweak a bill that LOC is tracking, or MMC is tracking, or the Association of Oregon Counties is tracking. So we really don't have to, you know, if we need to be aware of a priority, I'm sure we'll know about it between those organizations, so. Counsel Gonzalez.
Thank you very much for the information. I have to agree that, with Counsel Hillier, that we do need to be in that space, unfortunately, because of, we've got to have somebody out there who will always bridge the gaps when, as term, as people come and go. And then with the, with Mayor, the points that he made are clear. I had more concern, but you hit him. Thank you very much.
So what's the, how are we feeling about, of the 12? You know, considering we only have $100,000, which, I look at Beaverton, who has a full-time lobbyist, and she's busy. Counsel Hillier.
So I guess my question is, then, would this body take on setting some priorities, so that we would take that off this list?
I'd certainly, I think we could. I mean, we, it might be something, we put it there as a lower-level priority, that maybe there's something where we can't wrap our arms around it, because there's stuff that's breaking like crazy, usually, especially in Salem. In DC, not as much, but in Salem, yes.
And I ask that because it's like, well, if we had just kind of general categories, and then all of a sudden, the wind is flowing here or there, similar to what we're working on right now, and then we can take advantage of it, that seems to make really good sense to me.
So I have number one for the state.
I feel that way. I feel like we need to set some priorities, yeah.
If I could jump in on that point, too, I think what's commonly done, at least in the cities that I talked, is that the city council and staff develop priorities and get input from the lobbying firm on what's feasible, what's not feasible, and then finalize the list of priorities. And it sets the groundwork essentially for then your project funding ask and other requests.
So then essentially, it could come off the list in a way? Like, it's work that we would do, our homework, right, if you will?
Yeah.
So it doesn't have to be paid for on that list, or it's kind of part of some initial work with them?
The way it's worded currently in the RFP is assist and facility.
Yeah. It might come, say, there's a climate action-related item, and in the next long session, '25, there's something in our action plan we really want state help with, you know, that's something where we'd work with them to get it as our legislative priority, and they'd help us connect the dots. So I'm hearing one. Are you tracking this?
Yeah, I've got one for the state and two, three, six for state and federal.
Two, three, six, yep, and then one, two, three, six on the state.
Mm-hmm. And one clarifying question, if I may, for six on both the state and federal, to what degree do you want to be communicated with? Does that look like an annual report for both state and federal, or something more frequent?
I'd say in the state, what we're all getting right now, at least the mayors are getting, we're getting the update at the beginning of the session, and then most of the time, LOC, MMC will get updates that way. Maybe we get one at the beginning and one at the end.
Yeah.
And with the feds, I have no idea, because it's constant.
Yeah, what I've seen typically for the federal side is an annual report once a year.
Unless there's like a, you know, we're going for an earmark. Yeah, we're going after an earmark, or we reapply for the EV charging grant.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay.
We need flexibility.
And then, did you have Pac West on your list?
No, but I will add them.
And then there's, I'm forgetting the name, but I'll call Monique at GPI. GPI used a lobbyist to get the funding for them at the last session.
We can follow up.
Okay. I know Betsy Johnson loved them, because she's one of their testimonials.
She's not a bad ally. Is there desire from anybody else on council to sit on the RFP review committee? Thank you.
All right. Okay. Let's scroll back up. Okay, so council meeting, agenda review, communications roundtable. Any questions on any items on consent tonight? All right, we have one proclamation for the Tuolumne Employee of the Year. Who would like to do that?
Don't you do that?
I can't, I gave you guys first dibs.
Oh.
All right, I'll do it. All right. Okay, I just don't want to take every, you know, things for granted. I think that's consent. Pledge is, who did it last time? Counsel, yeah, so it's Counsel Hillier. Yep. Did I miss anything? I think I got everything. All right, so with that, we'll go ahead and do our roundtable, and I'll start to my left this time with Counsel Gonzalez.
I have no official roundtable, haven't attended anything. It's been kind of quiet on my side. I do want to say that I've been in search of the hearts every single day. I got one. We finally got one, okay? We got one. It was very difficult, I want to tell you right now, but I just find that to be so much fun, and I, and when I'm out there walking around the parks, the trails, I'm asking people, "Did you guys find anything?" And I sometimes think they may be the ones who place the parks, but they're not saying anything, and things like that, but you just don't know. Anybody's a candidate, right? Because we don't know who the volunteers are.
I did some yesterday, and then I heard this squeal like five minutes later.
Yes, yes. So I think that is just so amazing. So thank you so much, whoever came up with that.
All right, Counsel Sacco.
Thank you. So we had an idea committee meeting between the last council meeting and now, and we, it was very process-oriented. We elected chairs, we established group rules for meetings, we reviewed the city census information, so we could sort of wrap our heads around the demographic, who's living here in Tuolumne. And then we went over the recent survey that was conducted, which we all saw the results of, and that was it for our last idea committee, and that's all I have.
Counsel Hillier.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, Counsel Reyes.
No official meeting. Our meeting, the core meeting, was rescheduled. We had, we were supposed to meet last week, but we had to meet like during the ice storm thing, but that was rescheduled, and then rescheduled again. But it looks like we have actually coming to the CCCA, or whatever that committee is, two people that have applied, according to Lisa, so it's getting out there, the word. So thank you for, keep applying and keep looking for areas to volunteer within our community. Thank you.
Counsel President Pratt.
Well, I saw several of you at the Transportation Bond Completion Celebration.
There was, oh, yeah.
Yeah, but that was after our last council meeting. It's been a while. And then I attended a meeting with Mayor Bubinick about the ODOT tolling survey that Mayor Biel Ostoski is putting together, and we went through the questions and had some suggestions. I went to C4 meeting, and that was interesting. It was TRIMET-focused with their, it's called, what is it? Forward Together 2.0, it's just, if you could have everything in the world, what would you have?
Totally unrestricted dollars.
Yeah, unrestricted dollars. And then their 2025 service plan, and at that, they have a problem, because they're short 280 drivers and 50 mechanics.
Wow.
They cannot find people. So for us, that means line 76 that they're extending to Oregon City will now only operate from Meridian Park to Oregon City during rush hours, and that's it.
That's going to solve tolling.
So, and then 90, line 96, it's going to get its names changed, but I had a map here. Basically follows line 38, but it does a loop. Their goal was to pick up people at PCC Sylvania Campus, but now 96, instead of being an express route downtown, will pretty much follow line 38, do the loop to PCC, get on Barber, it will stop at the Barbet Transit Center except for rush hour, so it won't even be a direct line to downtown. So if you're going downtown from here, it's pretty much two transfers. And I figured my 20-minute drive to work would be a two-hour bus ride, so there you go. And our one act, we, that's the Region One Act. Oh, Roy Rogers stepped down as our chair, and Paul Savas stepped up, and Mayor Lube is our co-chair now, so we have Washington and Cloughins County represented again. And we talked about the statewide transportation plan, and this is going to be the, for 2027 to 2030, and basically, it's, I figured out that it's only going to be 88% of the dollars that are currently funded in this cycle, so they're going to have to cut back on things. And they're, they're also increasing the ADA funding, so everything else kind of gets cut back on. And so that, they're really cutting back on multimodal for some reason, and I didn't quite understand that, but, so basically, they're saying they're going to do no upgrades to anything, but they're going to try to keep the roads paved. Just what I got on that one. And, oh, I went, and then the last thing I did was, we all got an invite for Washington County Committee for Community Involvement, and to talk about their strategic plan, and I listened in, because it was just very interesting, and I was pretty impressed with the people and the questions they had. That's it.
All right. Back on the 25th, the MMC and Greer Portland, Inc. had the Meet the Mayors event at Brick's Tavern. It was pretty much a sell-out, about 50 people. The focus of that is the money crunch on cities and the inability to deliver infrastructure for growth that the governor is envisioning. So it was a discussion between mayors and the business community, and the business community kind of was not aware of some of the budget straits that some of the cities in the area are in, with several cities saying, if things don't change pretty soon, within five years, they're going to have to cut back tremendously on services. We already saw Beaverton had to do that. You guys forgot about talking about the advance. I want to thank Sherilyn for putting that together, and I very much enjoyed it, spending time with all of you, and creating our plan for the next year. On February 2nd, Sherilyn and I were listening to the League of Oregon Cities kickoff of the statewide legislative updates that have them every Friday at noon. It's a Zoom meeting, so if you want to attend and hear what's going on, it's kind of like those updates we were talking about earlier with Megan, that you're hearing, you know, weekly, what's going on. Should be interesting, by the end of next week, probably half the bills will be done, because this is a short session, so I think by the end of this week, if your bill hasn't been heard in a hearing, it's done, because they only have till March 5th to get this all wrapped up by. On the 8th, we had the Washington County Mayor's meeting, and we discussed the status of the Washington County justice system, which is going to be my ask after city council today, our city council meeting, and we talked about a committee that never knew existed that the chair was asking about, to have a city representative for the Public Safety Coordinating Council.
Did you step up?
Nope. The Mayor of Banks, Stephanie, has stepped up, and she will be the representative for the Washington County cities, because all of us scratched our heads and said, "We never heard of this council." How long has it been around? I guess for years. On the 9th, again, the LOC legislative statewide update. Today was the Washington County Coordinating Committee meeting. Metro is going through their Climate Pollution Reduction Grant Program. It's being funded by the EPA. They're just starting an appro- They're just starting in a preliminary state of that. They're going to develop their own climate action plan, working in conjunction with the cities in Metro and Washington County. It'll be going on for the next two years, developing that plan. The Washington County Transportation Development Tax will increase by 8.29%. That's the tax assessed against development that helps pay for infrastructure within Washington County. There was quite a bit of discussion about the J-PAC trip. This is a trip where the J-PAC Committee and representatives of Washington County go to Washington DC to lobby for transportation funding. It's going to be on May 13th through 16th. A lot of folks are not going, because that's budget season. There will be no electives from Portland, no electives from Multnomah County, no electives from Washington County Commission.
Who's elected?
It's basically the mayors. So that's, what, that's the question is, if it's just the mayors, is it worth going? And if we do go, that we have to have our act together on the legislative acts, on, especially in funding, given financial state that the federal government is in, the availability of funds, the competition for funds, and after being scolded by Earl Blumenauer last year, we all know just to come in with a handful of projects, not a big list. And then this afternoon was the meeting with Chair Harrington, where again, the county is going whole hog into updating the justice system, a big legislative ask, that they figured they're not going to get through for the short session, they're going to work on 20, on 2025, everything from community justice to the jail, to the courthouse, to judges. So my second ask, one of the asks I said, you know, we'll talk about a little later, is I still want to do that letter, just to seed the plant, if you will, to get this going, because we are super short on judges, and I'll get to that. And then, as Counsel President Pratt just mentioned, she presented the beginning of their strategic plan, which they're calling One Washington County. It's a multi-year strategic plan, doing it a little bit differently and making it so that the average person in Washington County can understand what the Washington County actually does, and what services they provide, department by department, and what their goals are. So it's going to be interesting to see how that turns out. They're taking the show on the road and getting public comment right now. If you want to look at it, go to Washington County's website and look at their strategic plan, look for the logo, One Washington County, and you can get into the details. The chair is thinking about doing a, a couple of meetings throughout the Washington County area to bring people up to speed on it. It's just a matter of calendars and who can do what when. And I think that's it for me. So we've got five minutes left, I'll go ahead and close this work session, and we'll reconvene with, for the city council meeting at 7:00. Thank you.